Good evening, everyone. Better? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the February Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please stand. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post your colors. Color guard, honor the flag of your country.
Audience, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, at ease.
All right, welcome, everyone. That was a lot of people there. All right, well, welcome, everyone. If you would like to welcome our guests this evening?
Absolutely. It's great to have everyone here at Northern Trails tonight. And to provide the official welcome for our February Board of Education meeting, I'd call on the principal of Northern Trails, Dr. Susan Gutierrez, who's going to provide a welcome tonight. Dr. G?
Good evening and welcome superintendent Beam, our Board of Education, community members, Northern Trails families, PTO members, and our amazing Northern Trails staff, to our district students in the room, especially our Girl Scout troop, they're amazing, 4895, and 5th grade students and their families on the far end who are performing this evening, our amazing community members, of course, and teachers and support staff from across the district, and finally, my administrative colleagues. I have three 6th grade students I'd like to introduce who are gonna share our welcome today, and I would remind you all that they're 12 years old, so they will rock it. Ms. Jacqueline Charbowski, Raiden Colesier, and Sophia Spelman-Mendez. Welcome to the mic. Come on up.[282.54][282.54][applause]
On behalf of our classmates and the Northern Trails school family, welcome to Northern Trails, home of the Huskies.
Northern Trails tiene 500 alumnos entre 5º y 6º grado.
Northern Trails is home to almost 500 5th and 6th grade students. More than half of our students are bilingual. Our students and their families speak more than 46 languages.
欢迎来到我们的家
我们是一个全球的学校我们想对他们表示欢迎来到我们学校
We welcome each of you to our school, a growing global community of learners, and welcome you to the pack.
Thank you. That was outstanding.
Now, we'd like to, once again, ask Dr. Gutierrez to come to the podium to provide our instructional highlight for this evening.
Fantastic. I'd like to call to the podium Dr. Mark Hutchenruther, Director of Orchestras for grades 5 through 12, and Goodwilly, Mrs. Michelle Benjamin, 6th grade Director of Bands at Northern Trails and Central Woodlands, and joining us across the room, I believe, is Mrs. Jen Daly, 5th grade General Music and 6th grade Choir Director. These colleagues are here tonight to share how their team has helped our 5th and 6th grade music basically navigate a world pandemic in a business of spit, I would say, and how incredibly music is so important to each student's development. I would also thank in advance representative members, who you'll meet in a minute of our 5th grade class, who will conclude our instructional moment. With one small shout out from Snowbiz, and we can give them credit for a recent snow day.
Thank you. Going to talk very briefly about the philosophical, psychological, and rationale underpinnings of what we do, and then the byproduct of all that is what you'll see the 5th graders present to you at the end. So, our philosophy of music education, well, what is that? Well, music learning promotes open-ended, critical, divergent, and dialogic thinking and encourages understanding and feeling mediated through body, mind, and senses. Music helps students to appreciate and connect with others past and present, as well as to understand and celebrate their own distinctiveness. Music is a discursive language and is capable of enhancing emotional states. Music is another language. Every student, regardless of socioeconomic needs, given an opportunity to play the instrument of their choice.
The psychology of music education. Music is both a social phenomenon and also emotional. We touch on both as musicians, and also we enhance this in our students as well. Their self-awareness and self-management is the students know when to play, and they know not to play at certain times, and altogether, they're creating this music. Music intelligence is one of Howard Gardner's nine multiple intelligences. The ninth one is music. That's how important this subject is. New synapses are formed in the brain when learning new skills. This is where we incorporate our growth mindset, where we can do something hard, we can learn an instrument, we can put music together to perform concerts, but also the fixed mindset, where we don't want that, we want to move over to the growth mindset, where each student is making this music and they're deepening these new neural pathways. Now, Dr. Gutierrez, she sent us this email today about a study that was done at MIT, where they researched the brains of musicians, and they found out that their neural pathways were both functional and structural, much more deeper than the ones who weren't musicians. And so, we're giving these students this gift of developing these pathways to later use in life, to use for other areas that they'll develop. So, as teachers, we see our students grow through many years in our program, and we're in a unique position to help them become mature, self-aware, young adults.
Music is worth knowing. It is one of the most important manifestations of our cultural heritage. Children need to know about Beethoven, Louis Armstrong, as well as about Newton and Einstein. Music is a potential in every individual that, like all potentials, should be developed to its fullest. It provides an outlet for creativity, self-expression, and individual uniqueness. It enables us to express our noblest thoughts and feelings.
What do we do as Huskies and across the district? In 5th grade, as you'll see over here, they're all involved in the music-making process. Each student's individual strengths are highlighted. When they produce this musical, there's so many varieties of different songs, and Mrs. Daly will give the class the song that best represents each class. Our 6th grade students, they get to perform in band, choir, and orchestra, and they get to choose what they're gonna do in 5th grade. So, 6th grade students, as the result of their fittings process, it's so fun. Let me tell you, getting to open up their instrument for the first time, or the first time they'll hear harmony, it's very rewarding for the students and also for us, the educators. And every child is put on the instrument that is best fit for them, and this is a very intricate process, and we really want to make sure that they're doing the right instrument or choir. The teachers, Husky parent community, and the Forest Hills Education Foundation provides support for us to obtain an instrument for anyone who needs one. We always find instruments in the district for all students to participate. Students who continue through middle school and high school are among the leaders and the highest achievers of each graduating class. So, adjusting to COVID as a band director was quite interesting. The pavement became my blackboard. I take big chalk and I wrote the notes out, and we played outside, watching the notes on where the buses meet over there. So, accommodations that we did, 5th grade, we had, we did deliver the curriculum, we were able to do this, and we were very creative in our ways that we did this. We followed all the recommendations from these two music organizations, NAFME and MSBOA, and we had bell covers for instruments, we had bass masks for singing and for playing the instruments. We were all three to six feet apart, depending on the instruments that we played. We partnered grades 5 to 12 to creatively build interest in the ensembles and music road. So, even though we had this little bit setback last year, our ensembles are still going strong through middle school and high school, and that's a lot that we're so proud of here. We had concerts livestreamed through the Fine Arts Center, and it was viewed at work. Parents in Europe are watching it, Africa, and by these Northern Trails family. So, we say there is no substitute for music. It's so important. It helps us understand and express our moods and our attitudes. So, here is Mrs. Daly, and she will perform with her students, Snowbiz. 250 students, two shows.
And one credited snow day. I knew what was coming. We had 95% odds. I just loved after the two shows that the kids performed, 125 kids, one night, 125 kids, the next night, I had a young man walk up to me, new to our district this year, and he said, "Mrs. G, I had no idea we were capable of something like this." Super cool. Thank you.
Thank you. We knew they were capable of this, so yes, thank you very much. Thank you to all of the performers this evening. Do you have any other comments you want to make there?
No. I thank you to our musicians, thank you to our music educators. Music is certainly a universal language, and we appreciate our families and all the efforts to make music. It is a wonderful thing. So, thanks for bringing music to our meeting tonight.
Excellent. All right. Yes, let's clap again for the students. All right. So, at this time, we typically move into the business part of the meeting. There are a lot of people here that may have been here just for the show, so we are gonna take a quick break if any of our singers, dancers, performers want to head home and prepare for a future snow day. Yes? Put in a good, I'll put in a good word, and then we'll reconvene here in a couple minutes. At this next portion of our meeting, we open it up for public comments. So, this is a chance for people in the community to address the Board of Education. Just to clarify a couple things here, the board, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Education where we're doing regular business. We love to hear from the community and the remarks our community shares with us here or in other media. We always work with the superintendent, incorporate that into future discussion items in our committee meetings, or if other people in the district need to get involved. So, if you do want to make a public comment, you can approach the microphone over there, and Val has a timer up there. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you could please state your name, so we could hear your name clearly, and limit your comments to three minutes, so, and we'll just go orderly.
Before my time starts, do I have permission to set up a board?
Sure. It's for us. It should come towards us because it's addressing the board. Thanks. Thank you.
My name is Becky Olson, and I am a Forest Hills parent. I'm deeply concerned about the optics our district is presenting to respected community leaders and students around our one black mark here, persistent harassment and microaggressions among students within Forest Hills Public Schools. I request that GLI become opt-in, not opt-out, not opt-in. We still have a lot of work to do here, and the incident-by-incident remedy approach isn't working. I'm carrying the torch for the dozens of kids who've come before me crying and pleading for your help. We're all here just trying to get by and live a good life, and they need a safe place to learn. I thought it might be helpful to revisit why GLI was custom-built for Forest Hills in the first place. 12 years ago, students begged for adults for reprieve. Many were sick of living within the 3G mantra of attending either a gated, gifted, or ghetto school here, and wanted to elevate awareness of such hurtful speech and ways to cope. In the years since, we've had several national news-making incidents. The 2016 football game when students chanted derogatory terms at their black opponents. The blackface scandal of 2018 that drew another 200-plus attendee board meeting. And everyday reports like a Guatemalan student who stepped up here to speak out after being told by her peers that she should go ahead and quit school already to become their housemaid. Then in March 2021, groups here tried to cancel culture, our GLI program. These tragedies, long after GLI launched, led our board to receive an open letter from the NAACP, signed by the Latino Community Coalition, the Urban League, and social workers that says, "We hope FHPS will use these opportunities to understand how a mostly-white, affluent school district can impart on its student body critical thinking skills about racism, insight on how Forest Hills came to be so white, and why an incident like these are problematic. They remind us these are not isolated. Attackers here tonight are also critical of our niche rankings, which have shifted from 1 to 2, and I hope they read them, because they read in every single incident. The academics were great, but it's lacking diversity, and it's not safe for minority students. GLI is worth our students' lives, health, and district's reputation to continue investing an average $73,000 a year on the program to create a safe place for kids to learn without distraction, pennies compared to the $3 million they're looking to turn down and give back to the government for us or funding. Some say this is a conversation best built for home, but we can't leave that to chance when there's an uproar over an occasional worksheet asking if it could hurt someone's feelings to be called a maid. Dan Beam has already said in March 2021 that GLI will not be cut, so it's time to cut the agenda. Speaking to all the political candidates of all levels in the room tonight, I want to remind you that we are at a public school board business meeting, and I condemn using this room and GLI as a tool to campaign for your private school vouchers and other political interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Hi, my name is Christine Mulka. That's M-U-L-K-A. I live at 3611 Burton Street Southeast, and that is Kentwood. I'm here because I was sent a copy of a Forest Hills Public Schools blast that I thought came out rather provocative, and some of the wording that was used was perhaps intended to evoke some emotion, and I'd like to read some of that to you. This was, it doesn't have a date on it. It comes from Support Forest Hills Public Schools. It says that "The Forest Hills Parents United is dark money organization." Then it says, "But they don't know that because they can't get the information for who the donors are." They're saying that they're attackers. It's saying that awful names are on the websites, awful websites, and it says that they're anti-Forest Hills Public Schools. I don't think anyone in this room is anti-Forest Hills Public Schools. I think everyone here loves our children, loves our community, and we're here because we want to be heard. I've never been to a board meeting before, but this prompted me to get out here tonight. I think it was ill-conceived. I think it was a choice that was made to either address the concerns of these groups who are trying to recall. The choice was either consider a liberality of ideas and discuss it, or to choose to discount those things that were important. I have to ask, what was the date that the first concerns were brought to this committee, and how long did it take to get them addressed? The busing, is that resolved? The choice was allocating money or not. All of these parents are still driving kids to school. I'm not a mom. I've lived in this community for 38 years, but I don't think that it is helpful to impose burdens on parents where they have to take time off of work to do carpooling. Another thing is the delegation of power from the voters and assigning it to the superintendent. Those are rights that the voters hold, and they entrust them to the board, and the concerns come to the board about those things. What was the first date that that concern was brought to you? And I do not believe that it has been addressed yet. Those powers are still remaining with the superintendent. My next concern is about the violation of the state statutes about open meetings. I apologize.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick Bennett, and I'm here tonight to address a situation that affects the parents of the Forest Hills music program. I'm the proud father of two sons who have both benefited greatly from the music department, and for that, I am personally grateful. It's fantastic. I love all the people involved in it. Excuse me. They do a tremendous job, and it's a remarkable enrichment to the student's life, that is for certain. But as a small business owner, I've discovered as of late that an issue has arisen that I thought had been solved previously regarding supply and service of band instruments. In the past, there was a sentiment regarding preferred vendors for our students that, whether assumed or implied, was misleading to parents as to which local music business would be, they would be directed. Running a business is tough, and it's rarely ever fair, but anytime we can seek a level playing field, we will do so. When dealing with our sons' music needs, we came to rely on places with the closest proximity to our school, as they are more likely to be involved in our communities in general. These would include Ritt Music, West Michigan Band and Music for All, to name a few, but as I understand it, they were not mentioned as a rule to parents as viable options. I would like to promote a mindset that in all supplier situations, contractual or even verbal agreements for a single source of supply to be discouraged so that healthy competition can flourish, leading to better pricing, service for the schools, the parents, and the students. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, I am not subtle enough. Good evening. My name is Sh
My name is Sharon Spongen. This used to be my cafeteria. I was the student supervisor here at Northern Trails for three and a half of the greatest years of my life. This school and this district mean everything to me. Since COVID started, I've been pretty much staying home. I have a very high-risk mom, she lives with me. I have another family member with cancer. So for me to come out, it had to mean a lot. This means a lot. And the reason I'm here tonight is because these board members, these administrators, the teachers, the support staff, the paraprofessionals, every single staff member who puts their heart into everything they do for these children deserves to be treated with so much more respect than they've been shown. So I want to say thank you, first of all, to the board, to the teachers, to the administrators who I adore. But I want to say something else, because I've got three minutes, and I'm not afraid to use them. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm no longer the student supervisor here. But I love this school. I got to build relationships with kids every single day, and they got to learn that they mattered, no matter what color their skin was, no matter what religion they practiced, no matter what house they lived in, no matter what their family dynamic looked like. And I wasn't alone, because we have this magical principal and a marvelous, marvelous, marvelous school counselor. And we have teachers and administrators who care about every single child here. And when I hear attacks on our school board for inclusivity, diversity, focusing on the whole student in their learning, growth, and development, and I'm ensuring that there is content available so that every child knows they are not alone, and someone else shares their story, I can't sit by. Every parent has the right to be involved in their child's education, of course, absolutely. But when you start with the premise that we need to go back to the way things were 20 years ago, in my opinion, you're going in the wrong direction. Kids today are struggling with so much. You're worried about them reading books in school? I'm worried about them feeling desperate and alone and scared. I am worried about the teachers who are doing so much with so little. And I am more than anything else looking at the business of learning as something that we need to focus on for each individual.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Elsie. Dawn Strang and I, representing Forest Hills Northern Academic Booster Club, as well as the Academic Boosters Clubs of Forest Hills Central and Forest Hills Eastern, have coordinated with Kellamire Plumbing and other trade companies to host a Path to Pro Skilled Trade Evening. This evening will, evening event will be interactive for students, while they will participate in hands-on activities representing the following trades: carpentry, electrical, plumbing, high-end control systems, HVAC, tool and die, welding, and windows rebuilding and remodeling. Also, Grand Rapids Community College's Workforce Training Program, the West Michigan Construction Institute, and Ferris State's Welding Technology Program will each have a booth to educate students on their respective programs. The event is being held on Thursday, March 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be held at Kellamire Plumbing at 10732 Northland Drive in Rockford. The event will be marketed to middle school and high school students and families, as well as alumni. We are asking students to register ahead of time, but no student will be turned away. The trade companies have secured door prizes and giveaways, and we invite any of the board members and anyone to stop by the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Galloway. Before I start my three minutes, I'm just wanting the children in the room to leave. That's just my personal opinion, just because the information I want to share is explicit. I'm going to read excerpt from a book called The Bluest Die, it's a Northern Hills High School library. This is another excerpt. Page 162, 63. Which, to me, sounds like child rape. So, there are more pages here in this book, in multiple books that were listed on a website some parents had put together, and I was alerted to it, and I read through it, and I was so sick to my stomach to know that this is just one book, and there's many books that our kids are accessible to. I can't believe that, that this is available for our kids to read. I mean, I, I mean, would you read this to your kids? Would you be okay with that? So there's other books that talk about [BLEEP], six [BLEEP], and [BLEEP]. That's great. And I just want you to know that this is not talk, that I like to talk. I don't feel comfortable even saying this stuff, because this is not my life, and I don't want my kids to be shown any of this stuff. So my understanding is Scott Hede has already written a book review process that includes checks and balances in for our parental and community input. But where are we at in implementing that? This started last May when my husband had to read a book that my eighth-grade daughter was supposed to read. And it was horrible language, it was, it was racist, it was talking about putting hands down on the girl's pants. So it had the sexual, it had the racial, and it had terrible language in it. So just because some people think this form of literary porn is acceptable, and as they feel that their kids hear this, hear this stuff in the world anyway, I'm not. I'm not of the belief that my children aren't to be exposed to the sexual child abuse in our publicly-funded school systems, and I would hope you believe the same. So I ask again, when will this be corrected and our children protected? Thanks, Sarah.
My name's Carol, and I live in Plainfield Township, and I'd like to start by opening in prayer, and I am asking that anyone that wants to, please join me, I think we need it after the last one. You guys are sick. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight. We ask that your Holy Spirit would come upon each and every person here, and that their hearts would be softened and their eyes would be open to the truth. Give each one of us wisdom and courage to do the right thing, and lead us to follow your righteous ways. In Jesus' name, amen. I want to start by just talking about something I found out about today, and obviously, I'm way behind the times because I didn't know that you had something called the Global Learners Initiative, and that it had everything to do with inclusivity and equity. And would you guys stop talking? You are so rude. Shh, shh. Hey, the, the meeting's up here, go ahead, please, go ahead. So I noticed a lot of the words in the Global Learners, Learners Initiative were things like inclusive and equitable, empathy for global society, meaning productive lives, understanding systemic and global teams. The words I know, noticed were lacking were no more individualism, restrictions on individual liberty, no religious freedom, chips in your arm or hand so you have no privacy, no individual ownership, a cashless society, a social credit system, limits to how far you can drive, what and how much you can eat or drink, 10 global regions, no individual nations, and finally, the Antichrist, because that's what you guys are teaching, and that's where it's headed. If you haven't read the Bible, I suggest that you do, it's not a joke, it's a history book, it's real. I dare you to just read some of it. I mean, this is where this stuff is leading, it's not a joke. So God created man in his image. In the image of God, he created a male and female, he created them, Genesis 127. He created them male and female and blessed them, called them mankind in the day they were created, Genesis 5:2. There have been two genders for thousands of years, and now all of a sudden, we're supposed to believe things have changed. What is the real reason you want to confuse these kids about their gender? It says right here in these two verses that God created two genders, only two. These kids' brains aren't even developed yet, they should be learning the truth, not confusion. And they're not cats and dogs either, and we don't need litter boxes, and the school's for Pete's sake. "For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil," 1 Timothy 6:10. Money itself isn't evil, but the love of it is. When money is put before children's health, that is purely wicked. Most, most of us here know what's going on. The agenda you're following and pushing onto these kids is ruining people's lives. If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in me, to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea, Matthew 18:6. Just think about this stuff. Thank you, Carol.
I have a Founder's Bible here, if anybody's interested in knowing how this country was founded, you can get one too. My son-in-law sent for it for me on Amazon, you can each get a copy if you want. It tells the history of this country and how it was founded on godly principles. And I can't believe we have parents right here that are laughing about pornography in this school. I graduated from this school in 1970, believe you me, nobody would have put up with that at that time. And I've got two grandkids here, and I'm ashamed they go here. After listening to this, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You really ought to.
Carol, you need to, this is the time to address the board, please?
The last two football games that I attended for my youngest grandson here, they left out the National Anthem. Two games in a row, and I don't think that was by accident. God bless the parents, God bless their efforts to raise their children in truth and freedom. God bless those who teach the truth. God bless the USA, founded on godly principles. Your intent to continue to teach lies and perversions against God and country is evil, and it's child abuse. It's the same country and the same God who allows you to draw your paychecks every week. If this country is so repulsive to you the way it is right now, leave and take your regressive ideology with you. We don't want it, or we don't need it here. I would like to pray, join me if you will. Dear God, we need your help, we are under tyranny from our own government. The United States has turned its back on you, and we are reaping that result. We want to repent and turn. Our children and grandchildren are under assault, they are suffering abuse on every level. Sadly, our schools, including this one, have been given over to Satan's influence with no holds barred. They are guilty of child abuse. We are parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and friends who by your grace are here to ask forgiveness and mercy on us, and for your help to fight this evil that stretches from preschool to 12th grade. Mandating masks, perverse and untruthful teachings, open the eyes of these blinded to what is happening. Those who want, don't dare, or don't want to get involved, cause them to come to understand this is a spiritual battle for the hearts and minds of this generation. I pray that every effort of this school board is stopped that is promoting this current administration's government's overreach into our lives, programming our students to hate each other, parents, police, church, and ultimately, you, our God. It's designed to tear down everything you put into existence. Lord, allow your truth to flood this school district, not what society is dictating. I am thankful for those teachers who are willing to stand against evil. I believe there are those in this school system. Strengthen them, fill them with courage to speak out. The Bible teaches this will not come without a cost. Help us, God, to put our faith and trust in you now more than ever. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Hi, my name is Kay Sumnerz, and although I may not reside in your district, I have friends and family who do, and they have children that attend your schools. Those of us in neighboring communities have many encounters, both personal and business, with each other. How you teach children and what you teach children affects all of us. Now, I had really prepared statements that I was going to address, but when I heard about the incidents that you had at your school in recent years regarding the hostility that children were receiving from other children, decided I needed to change it up a little bit, and looked into your, the global leadership. And when I looked at it, you have global, global, global in so much of the language there, and it's disturbing. If you're, I hope that all of you are familiar with the World Economic Forum. It was founded by and orchestrated by Klaus Schwab. And I hope everyone in this room looks it up. It is very important, because what they are doing is wanting to have a global society, that America won't stand on her own and be a, a country, a sovereign country anymore. And it, they, they, they speak it out loud from podiums into a microphone as to what their goals are. And their motto is, you will own, by 2030, you will own nothing and you will be happy. Look it up. That is a pretty scary premise, and it is what they want to do. And how they're doing it is by dividing us by race, by age, by economic status. It is their goal. It, and they're, and they're doing it, and this pandemic was just their opportunity to put their foot on the gas. And it is moving at astronomical rate. I, I believe in learning about each other, other countries, other cultures, that's important. But you need to also teach the truth, teach the good and the bad. I understand that the Chinese culture, you're teaching that a lot in this school district. That's fine, but are you also teaching the, the children the good and the bad? It's not about the Chinese people that's awful, it's the government that they live under, and the conditions that they live under. You need to teach them everything. If you wanted a, a different culture to teach, you could have chosen Japan. You know, they, they don't force abortions, they don't take the Uighurs and put them in concentration camps and torture them, and do live organ removals. You know, I, I said, I'm, I'm all about learning other cultures, but please, everyone, be aware of what you're teaching your children.
Thank you, Kay.
Good evening, my name is Greg. I had no anticipation of coming up here and addressing this board. I've heard numerous times of the, the evil that is going on with different school boards. And so to sit out here and watch this evil, I wanted to get very close and look in all of your faces as, as men and women that are going to sit here and let this go on with these children, and this young lady who had to get up here and bring it to your attention of what is in these, in these books, and almost have a breakdown of what is in here. what is in these books and almost have a breakdown of what is in here, and you sit here with a straight face or a smirk on your face, and you think this is all right? This is the face of evil right here. This is the problem that we have, and this isn't any joke, okay? This is no joke. This is the face of evil right here, and I don't care which one of you think, "Well, you know what? The rest of them wanted it, so I played along with it because they pay me to do this." Guess what? If you don't get up and stand in the gap and you let this garbage go on and you let this evil go on with all these children, you will pay the price. I promise you, you will be held accountable. So sit there and smile and smirk and pretend like it's not going on if you want to. You will be held accountable. Maybe not here, maybe not now, but I promise you, this evil that you are doing, it will come around, and you will be held accountable. So keep smirking. Keep smirking if you think it's funny. If you think these books are funny and all that stuff she had to rattle off up here to try to get your attention that obviously isn't getting your attention, which is why this evil continues to go on, you're sick. Every one of you up here is completely sick, and it makes me disgusted and sick to my stomach. You're evil. You guys are all evil.
My name is Michelle Van Aalsberg, resident of Forest Hills. My husband and I attended Pine Ridge's children and up through FHZ. I want to voice my support for our teachers and faculty at the schools today. Forest Hills is one of the top districts for education, and we are all so fortunate to have our kids here. I sympathize with the board and our educators while they have been under attack for the past two years. The two groups of folks responsible for this are Forest Hills for a Just Education and Forest Hills Parents United, filed by the same person whose kids do not attend FHPS. Some of these people strongly feel that our teachers are sending kids home with pornography, teaching hidden divisive materials that are embedded into math, science, and language arts. They want to check our kids' private parts before they use the bathroom or play sports. Some have threatened to sue Dan Beam for $1 million for requiring masks when our kids and teachers were all getting sick. They could not find a plaintiff for their intended lawsuit, however. We always knew masks would come off when the cases lowered. I went from getting weekly emails on average of 10 to 15 kids a week infected down to an email roast recently with zero kids infected. Some of these folks will tell you they forced the hand of our superintendent with threats and one by masks coming off. Science will say otherwise. I can vouch for my children's teachers that they have never been sent home with pornography. I've never seen hidden messages in my kids' fractions or multiplication tables, and my kids have no idea what CRT is. They also have never been taught to feel shame about having white skin. My kids are fine. They are happy and wonderful little humans who adore their teachers. Teachers are who we should be talking about today. I will tell you what my kids' teachers actually have done. Nancy Townsend, my daughter's teacher at Pine Ridge, called us at home when my child was quarantining to make sure she could get help with her math homework. My daughter was struggling, and Nancy knew she needed extra help. That is dedication. My daughter was on her mind and wanted her to have confidence returning to school. Diane Pennycat at Central Woodlands has been amazing from the start. My son went virtual for 5th grade, so missed out on what the new building was like and was a little nervous to go back in person. She was so warm and welcoming and instilled the joy of reading in my little boy. I can't tell you how many fantasy dragon trilogies he's brought home. We need to keep the joy in our teachers by canceling this agenda to exhaust them and send them out of the profession. We need to keep them happy and filling our kids' buckets with inspiration, excitement, and learning, and just a love for school. That's how FHPS stays number one. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James, and I'm not from here. I'm from Manchester, Michigan. I drove all the way to be here. On September 7, 2021, a lot of our kids walked into the school unmasked. And I know you guys aren't dealing with masks right now, and it got hundreds of millions of views, not 10, not 20, hundreds of millions. It went global. Our kids stood up against this. This is not about masks or vaccines or critical race theory. This is a statement that I came all the way here to make. This is about power, and it's about control. This is no longer public school. This is government school. The only way to stop this is to get your kids out of these government-funded schools. Stop their funding. Listen, they have unmasked our kids. They can do whatever they want because they have the power. It's been given to them. But the Constitution says differently. I have a constitutional lawsuit going against my school district, and I'm not losing. I'm going to win, and it's for constitutional damage, is what you are doing. You will be held accountable. You are breaking the law. You all sworn oath to the Constitution to get this job. Whether it's critical race theory, vaccines, masking, whatever it is, uphold your oath. That is your number-one role in your office. It is not to put the garbage that you're bringing to these parents. Fight back. If they don't give you the power back, get your kids out of the school. When there's no money here, they can't run. We need to get our schools back. These government-run schools need to end. I understand that you believe that there's intellect here and that there's passion here and that we're all in this together. Maybe consider that there's no such thing actually as public health. There's individual health, and as individuals in this country, we stand under our Constitution, which gives us liberty and justice for all. If you guys aren't standing up for your children, they will own your children. If you're not raising your children, they will raise your children. And I want you to ask yourself, if you can't question the experts...
Can you address the board, please?
No, you're taking up my time. I can talk... This is a statement. If you, if you, if you cannot question the experts, maybe you should reconsider if that they are actually experts. Unseat these people, vote them out, and get your schools back. The government funding of this garbage needs to end right now. God bless America, and I hope that you guys listen to... I drove hours to be here. We are going to get our schools back. We will not let you win. Lawsuits are coming. They're not threats, they're promises. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Boone. If you don't know me by now, you can find me on StephanieBooneForKentCountyCommissioner on Facebook or BooneForKent5.com online. On this President's Day, I just thought it might be nice to acknowledge some words from the wise, from some of our past presidents. Abraham Lincoln, 1859. "A capacity and taste for reading gives access to whatever has already been discovered by others." George Washington, 1796. "A primary object should be the education of our youth in the science of government. In a republic, what species of knowledge can be equally important, and what duty more pressing than communicating it to those who are to be the future guardians of the liberties of the country?" In other words, the basics. George Washington, 1796. "Citizens by birth or choice of a common country, that country has a right to concentrate your affections. The name of American, which belongs to you in your national capacity, must always exalt the just pride of patriotism more than any appellation derived from local discriminations." Ronald Reagan, our 40th president, said, "Education is not the means of showing people how to get what they want. Education is an exercise by means of which enough men, it is hoped, will learn to want what is worth having." "To educate a man in mind and not in morals is to educate a menace to society." Theodore Roosevelt, 26th president. Definition of morals. "Of concern with the judgment of right or wrong of human action and character. Teaching or exhibiting goodness or correctness of character and behavior, conforming to standards of what is right or just in behavior. Lead by example and be a model, not only for lifelong learning, but also how to be." Teach our kids how to be, not what to be. There's a reason that we don't hear our past presidents all talking about GLI and CRT and DEI, because that's not what it's about. It's about respect for all. We're all Americans, and that has to come first. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Loykis, and I have four children in the Forest Hills School District. First of all, I want to say that I'm sorry. I'm sorry to all the schoolchildren, staff, and families. I tried to stop the mandates. Yes, like many others that spoke up over the last year, many issues during board meetings and other events, but it was not enough. We fought for you. We shared facts, links, plenty of data. We promoted medical freedom of choice, but we were stopped by our President of the United States, our Governor, County Health Department, Adam London. I didn't even know who he was. Now I know who he is now. Dan Beam, their Superintendent, the Board, and surprisingly, other parents that have tried to stop us. What I want you to know is I spoke to a couple Board members about these topics, and there's a couple things that were said to me. Mike, we can actually find aid on both sides of these mass mandates, for and against. Another one said, "We don't want to break the law." When I asked what law, there was no response because there wasn't a law. And the one that probably bothered me the most was, "We must simply agree to disagree." With all of this, to me, the message is clear. The Board of Education and Dan does not support the side of medical freedom of choice. This is the side of history that they have chosen not to give freedom. Will anyone that I listed above apologize for the mess they've done to you? The sadness, the depression, mouth infections, inability to see facial expressions, the fear, the fear of others, and so much more. So Dan, Suzanne, Marty, Kristen, Nicole, Mary, Kristen, and Maggie, I wonder if you think about any intervention, medical intervention, that you do not want in your future? God forbid you're in a situation where you cannot decide. Maybe it's someone caring for you who gets to decide decades from now. Maybe it's these wonderful children that sung, and that these moments now in your future, they're your caregivers, and you are forced to adhere to the policies you don't agree with. It is possible in your future. What will you tell them? "I don't want that medical intervention. What about my rights?" And will you say, "I was simply doing my job"? And this grown child says, "Too bad. It's for the greater good." What do you say to them? Maybe they'll actually say, "You know what? It's your choice. It's your choice." So yes, the mandate was dropped recently, but we know this is not the end. It's the beginning of many parents standing for the rights of all kids and staff and teachers and you. I'm standing up for you. I just don't know why you don't see it. The evidence is clear on both sides. You have a decision to make for the future, so my question to you, Dan, and the Board of Education, what side of history do you want to be on?
Good evening, Dr. Beam, Board of Education, and guardians of Forest Hills students. First off, I would like to commend the students who spoke earlier to introduce their school. One student's statement stood out, and that was when they called Forest Hills "a glowing community of global learners." I also appreciated the emphasis on the arts and music helping students to develop intelligence and increasingly important, emotional intelligence, inner growth mindset, much needed around these parts. I come from the unique perspective of having gone to a diverse private Catholic school from K through 12, so I've studied the Bible extremely extensively. I also went to a private Christian college. I recently switched one of my children to a diverse district this year, giving our family a unique insight into the differences and similarities in between an inner-city school compared to a mostly affluent district. As someone who went to a private school but went with diversity and has a child in a neighboring district with a plethora of beautiful diversity, as well as a child in district, I'm appalled at the attacks on all programs here that would help our dominant culture understand and emphasize what experiences people have outside of their own. Forest Hills' dominant culture is about 98.5% white. In order to give our students at Forest Hills Public Schools real-life social experience, it is important to have representation, as well as programs that not only educate on the unique challenges of different races, cultures, disabilities, income levels, the LGBTQ+ community, and ethnicities, but give a glimpse into the real world they will encounter for the rest of their lives. Part of this is access to books representing all families and individuals. Statistically, giving kids a space to be themselves without judgment will prevent a large percentage of suicides in adolescents. Something to keep in mind. Finally, I would like to call for those who do not even reside in this district to please leave our Board, Superintendent, staff, and students alone and quit it with the New World Order conspiracy theories. That is what is dividing us. And I'd like to say a prayer of my own. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight to expose the truth. Please bless those who have so much hatred in their hearts and help them to realize that there is a reason for separation of church and state. Amen. And I see Doug Lee's up next, so buckle in for another racist rant, folks.
Well, we can certainly see who's racist. I'm here to... My name is Doug Lee, and I have four kids that graduated, and two of them you have damaged through the principles that you implement in your school. So I'm also here to speak about the future. I'm here today to highlight this Board of Education and Superintendent, your gross negligence allowing the CRT be taught and creating racial divide in a district where there was none. CRT was originally taught in law classrooms so undergraduate students could see the inequities using a racial lens. It was never meant to be taught in lower education, as the control measures and the lack of teacher training gave way to individual misrepresentation of its principles. So teachers were left to interpret its meaning, creating a circumstance that white people are evil. Many of our Board of Education members are attorneys, and it's not surprising why we are debating this in Forest Hills. Your job as educators is to teach the core curriculum to our kids. Our job as parents is to teach them about racism and sexual orientation. Your track record is appalling, and every one of you should step down immediately and let the more competent Board of Education take the reins and try to repair the damage that you've created. It is fitting today that on President's Day, your support of CRT and the 1619 Project was created, has created an environment that even our forefathers were evil white men. What hypocrites every one of you are. One final comment. If I were here today standing as a black man, reading the exact same speech, you would take note and understand its meaning. Look at who has judged me by the color of my skin. Maybe now you understand how racist you truly are. We learned a long time ago not to judge a person based on the color of their skin, but on the content of their character. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jared Jacobowski. My wife and I have been residents of the district for over 30 years, and this is a redo of my testimony from last month. I doubt that it really sunk in then. It bears repeating. In our neighborhood, there are half a dozen kids going off to middle school. They are of very diverse families, mixed-race, black, and Hispanic kids, all born of white mothers, daughters of our white neighbors. The parents and grandparents of these diverse families wish they had known about the recent recall petition. They all would have signed on. Why? Well, because of their kids' taunts and accusations. They've been declaring, "Mom, you're a racist. Grandma, you're a racist. Grandpa, you're a racist." And get this, these very impressionable mixed-race kids bully their own half-siblings and call them racist, too. Why? Because they're guilty of having lighter complexions, and the lighter, whiter they are, well, the more guilty they are. Of course, they've been asked, "Where did you get the idea? We are racist. Who's telling you such terrible things?" And they all, in several grades, answer matter-of-factly, "At school, by our teachers. At school, by our teachers." Yes, at school, by their teachers. Such a sickness is not isolated to only one neighborhood. It's not quarantined to just one or two classrooms. Oh, no. This is a microcosm of disease that's much more pervasive, a true pandemic. A couple thousand years ago, someone very wise said, "Forgive them, Father. They know not what they do." And he said, "By their fruits, we shall know them." Mr. Beam's letter in 2020 espousing CRT dogma... Mr. Beam's letter in 2020 espousing CRT dogma under different names made it painfully clear how these bitter seeds were sown. So who has cultivated this rotting divisive fruit in our schools? I suggest there are some right here, right now, who need only look into a mirror for the answer. So here we are, February, Black History Month. We need to know who is truly on the right side of history. The Board chooses not to engage in dialogue. Still, there are questions that must be asked, especially heading into November. We must know who you really are, what you believe, and what your actual goals and methods vis-à-vis the children in our district. And so I ask a two-part question. Do you believe that parents should be solely responsible for imparting social, emotional, ethical learning to instill their values? And do you reject teachers instilling their own ethical and socio-political biases through the conduit of your SEL-laden curriculum? If so, just raise your hands.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your answer.
Hello, my name is David McGrath. I have three kids in the Forest Hills Northern Schools. I want to express some thoughts I have about our country's response to the COVID-19 pandemic and about how things were handled in the schools. I will add that I am a primary care physician. My specialty is internal medicine. Our nation's response to the pandemic was in many ways surprising to me. We are a wealthy nation, and we have access to the best that modern medicine has to offer. We are fortunate to live in a time when there is a good understanding of the cause of the disease. Experts rapidly determined that COVID-19 disease is caused by a virus that is spread chiefly through the air. The public was informed of strategies to limit the spread of the virus, including masking and social distancing. Safe and effective vaccines were developed in a miraculously short period of time. Even so, more than 900,000 people in our country have now died from COVID-19. Millions of Americans required hospitalization with severe COVID-19 illness. Our healthcare systems became overwhelmed. The virus spread through our country in chain reactions with each surge. The United States suffered a far higher COVID-19 death rate than other wealthy countries. How we feared, I'm sorry, how we fared as a nation was determined somewhat by the infectiousness of the virus. But our national suffering was also determined by how we as individuals and as a society balanced multiple values. These include an individual's right to self-determination, what we owe to each other, how much trust we place in health experts, impacts on business and the economy, the impacts on our healthcare systems, the value of in-person learning, the mental health impacts of social distancing, how we value the lives of those at risk for severe disease. Superintendent Beam and members of the School Board, you found yourselves in the challenging position of trying to balance often conflicting values to develop COVID-19 strategies for the schools. I believe you did the best you could have. It was a complicated and changing situation and an emotionally charged environment. You appropriately sought guidance from public health experts. I believe you consistently prioritize the welfare of our children and our community, and I am grateful to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Angela. My head is kind of spinning with all the different topics that have been addressed here. I might kind of express different topics, but I am going to sort of keep it to equality, even though I might be addressing the mask. But we talk about equality, but what does that mean? Because obviously, there's people in here that say they want equality, but yet if we have a different opinion than that, then it's wrong. And to me, the pandemic started on March 13th. That was the day my son's school closed. That was actually the day that my daughter got back from Mexico. I was actually very anxious with her being on an airplane coming back that day. And I had actually started wearing masks to the grocery store, and people had given these looks, like, "How ridiculous." But when we were finally told, finally told to wear a mask by that time, well, I had actually read the science and found out they were useless. You know, even our Lord Fauci had already went on TV and said they were useless. And by that time, it was obvious that this wasn't this great pandemic. People weren't dying in front of me. I work with the elderly. I'm a home health aide. I work with the elderly. No one's gotten sick. Certainly no one's died of this. Not the workers, not the, you know, clients. So when I don't want to wear a mask now, I should have the equal right to make that decision. And obviously, we're all concerned about, you know, the mandates coming out of, you know, shots. I pray that it never comes out for our children. And these are also areas where we need to have, you know, equal choice to take it or don't take it, wear a mask, don't wear it. And when we talk about equality, we need to talk about equality of opportunities. Because frequently, we talk about equitable. And equitable is more of this two parties reached an equitable agreement. And that is the outcome. Not everybody's going to have the same outcome. They're just not. That's not the way the world life works. But we need equal opportunity, not perfect equality of outcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scott. And the last time I was here, I made a plea for conversation in that that never happened. Nobody contacted me. So I just want to start out by reading a section of Michigan law. Section 380-10 begins, "It is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching and education of their children." That that causes a problem here because we have such an ideological divide in our community. So in addressing you guys, one of the challenges would be, how do you keep that neutral, right? One of the ways to keep it neutral is to keep moral opinions out of school, right? Can we teach facts? Can we teach? Can we teach how the government operates? Can we keep ideology out of the classroom? If we're going to offer up, say, a left-wing opinion article from The Atlantic, how about a counterpart article found in The Daily Wire? Or Newsmax or something along those lines? I would prefer to see our kids taught as free thinkers and not indoctrinated into one opinion. I see fact-check and false and fallacy up here. But really, what have I said that's wrong, that needs to be fact-checked? And my point is, this is directed to them, not you guys. Actually, you know what? I would love if you guys
Over here, over here.
If you guys would have a conversation with me outside of this meeting.
Yeah.
It would be great because we could debate.
You, yeah, yeah.
And so and so my, you know, my point to this is, how do we keep things neutral? There, again, there's an ideological divide here. You know, these people make a mockery of their shirts. They say hope, love, equality, inclusion and kindness, but I experienced none of that from them. I would be happy, given the opportunity, to give that to you. But I see none of that here. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Hello.
This is a meeting of the Board of Education. It's our guest's turn to speak. Thank you.
Actually, what I would have liked to have seen happen would would have been that this gaggle of harpies behind me would have been asked to leave their signs on the floor. Because if you don't feel that that's a form of censorship or you don't feel that that's impacting free speech, I guess that we've already discovered the root of our problem. So I'll tell you that it's very easy to convict you guys. It's easy to convict you guys with your own words. Superintendent Beam, on the district webpage, writes a very well-intentioned letter. It says, "One of the key takeaways from that is that children take their cues from those of us that are entrusted with their care." I agree with that wholeheartedly. We lead by example. The example that's been shown over the last two years by the different school districts within Kent County is reprehensible. Starting with the fact that it was discovered early on that Kent ISD was colluding with the Director of the Health Department to emplace mask mandates, all while communicating to the parents that parental choice would be left in place. So if you start with that and then you go immediately to your webpage where you have your guiding principles, right? Vision, all learning, all learners achieving individual potential. That has nothing to do with equity, right? That's their individual potential that can be achieved through the opportunity of a classroom. A classroom which by its very nature should be a safe space, right? A safe space to question, a safe space to demonstrate diversity. How about the diversity between masked and non-masked? Since the science is not clear. Since it's evident that states that did away with mask mandates early on suffered exactly the same outcomes as those states that did leave masks in place, particularly for children in the developmental stage, right? Because studies are coming out now that are indicating to you, hopefully you're all aware of it, that our children are now one and a half years behind in learning because of the mask mandates and because of the social distancing and because of the learning, the distance learning that you guys enacted. The other thing I would tell you is the masks have been shown to be detrimental. These kids have already lost 20 to 30 points of IQ. For each passing month that you leave the masks on, they're going to suffer more. And so if you walk down your list, trust, how do we trust that you won't do the wrong thing again? How do we trust that the very bastion that should be lauding critical thinking and common sense knowledge won't again follow our leaders blindly down the path of detrimental enforcement to our kids and to us? You've sown division into our households, you've torn apart our families, and you've encroached upon a space that should be rightfully the parents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there. My name is Brenda. I am a healthcare administrator, a med tech. I work with hospice disabled. I also work with United Healthcare Workers and America's Frontline Doctors. I do want to thank you for trying to take away our free speech. I do want to say all men are created equal. That doesn't mean equal outcome. Nowhere in the Bible do we talk about superficial color of skin because we all bleed red. We're all United States of American citizens. The government cannot take away our inalienable rights. Many of you guys might need to vers yourself on that. The Congress makes laws. Not Adam London, not the Esser money that you get, "Follow the money pit," going on. Cowardice lacks courage. And the ignorance of the law does not make you exempt, you guys. I'm sorry. The oath is to the Constitution, not the government. And I see many people here touching their mask. So obviously, they're not medically equipped to don and doff it. Every time you touch your mask, you are contaminating it. So get your facts straight on that because anytime you touch it and remove it improperly, it goes inside of a bag and it is thrown away carefully. You don't wear it for more than an hour. Aerosols are less than 100% of one hair. Aerosols go through masks. Even an N95 mask cannot stop an aerosol. So please educate yourself. But I think you really need to educate yourself more in the government and your oath to your office because all of you guys took an oath of office. We have FOIA's that you signed. Congress makes laws, not Adam London, not even the Supreme Court because the Supreme Court is a judiciary branch. Look it up, fact-checked, refact, refact, going on here. Also, look up the size of a mic rod and the mask. You are hurting our kids. Alls we do is ask that you follow your oath of office, which is our Michigan School Code and to the United States Supreme Court for our inalienable rights. And none of mine died of COVID, I do want to say. They died after taking the experimental shot or pushed on remdesivir with a vent, which is also emergency authorization use only. And for many people that think that this isn't still experimental, go to Walgreens, go to CVS, go inside the package insert and read it. Dr. McCullough, I work with, Dr. Christina Parks, a cellular molecular biologist, follow Ron Johnson's Healthcare Children's Defense, which was publicized two weeks ago on what is going on. You are hurting our kids. Alls we ask is you follow your oath of office, which is not to the government. Thank you.
My name is Nick Brill. Good evening, Board members and Mr. Beam. False fallacy calling him a doctor. Anyway, Esser funds. We've asked for transparency and accountability on that. We haven't heard anything. I suggested maybe sending out a survey to the parents and to the teachers to find out what's important to them, figure out how to spend that money. We were promised some town hall-type forms last fall. Haven't seen them yet. Just another empty promise. I went to Rockford School Board meeting last Monday. Rockford's doing a lot of things wrong, but they are doing some things right. They've sent out surveys to their parents and the community. What's important to you? Where do we think we should spend this money? After all, it is our money, right? And if you don't want us to have a say in how to spend it, then send it back. Because you're putting a burden on my kids, my grandkids, to pay that money back. And Dan, you told me at a finance meeting last fall that you were trying to come up with creative ways to spend the money because there was so much of it that you didn't know how to spend it. I got an email from my child's teacher today asking for more Post-it notes and markers and glue sticks. You guys are sitting on a plethora of money, both from the Esser funds and your general funds, but we're being asked at a time where we've been economically impacted the hardest by COVID, we're being asked to provide that? No. Get it together, please. We've been asking you for months. Transparency, accountability. We can spend $100,000 on a cameraman, but I gotta send in glue sticks for my kid? Come on. And while I'm at it, we didn't go far enough with the letter that I served you guys, and I will serve another one if you do not meet this one demand. Parents are allowed back in the schools effective immediately. You are not going to keep us from our children anymore. MCL 380.10, we have a fundamental right to be involved in their education, and I am here tonight to demand you allow us back into the schools, or I will serve you with another letter of intent for $1 million.
I'm Cherry Talsman, I'll keep it short. I started teaching here in Forest Hills in 1984, and at that time, it truly was a great school. And everybody I worked with was great. I started at Northern Middle and Northern High School and moved on and up at Eastern. But I have to tell you, the change now from then horrifies me, absolutely horrifies me. I was around, started here, Dan Beam, when you started, and Mary, when you became a member of the Board. I used to sub with your husband, I believe, and that was at Central. Never in my wildest dreams did I ever think I would hear what I heard here tonight, and I didn't want to believe it, but that's why I came. Those books? Who would ever put a book like that in a school, let alone in your home? What is wrong with you? I, I just, what? In CRT, you say you don't teach CRT? Well, guess what? I just had a dinner with a little girl last night who's graduating from eighth grade, and she flat out said, "Oh, yeah." I asked her, "Are they teaching you this, who teaching you this?" "Oh, yeah." So, don't tell me you're not teaching CRT. You may call it something different, but you're infusing those same ideas and being told, our kids being told that our founding fathers were just old white men. What is, I, I feel like you're insane. I don't know if it's evil, but, and you girls over there. I wonder if you have ever even bothered to look up close, Rob, or the World Economic Forum? I bet you haven't, I bet you don't even know what it is. I suggest, yeah, I suggest you do, because you know what? You are him. That's who you are. You guys-
You need to address the Board during public comments. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just telling you.
You need to address the Board.
All right, I'm just telling everybody, that's who they are. They are Marxists, and that's what you're teaching here. And I am sick, because I used to love teaching him.
Good evening, Forest Hills Board. My name is Ryan Kelly, candidate for Michigan Governor. I was recently told that you dropped your mask mandates. Can you please start my time over again, please?
Everybody, can you, he's a guest here, he has his three minutes, so we're going to listen. Thank you.
Good evening, Forest Hills School Board. My name is Ryan Kelly, candidate for Michigan Governor. I'm here with you this evening, want to share a few thoughts with you, and start off by saying I hear that you've recently dropped the mask mandates here in Forest Hills Schools. That's not a victory by any means. That's moving with the political winds because we're in an election year. And people see through all of that nonsense, and that's why they're changing it at the state level. And since you're going along with it, that lets us know that you're here for the political winds and you're not here to do the right thing. So, after the election year, we're back to the same old nonsense that we've seen for the last two years. Recently, the Michigan Democratic Party said, "Not sure where this parents should control what's taught in our schools because they are our kids," is originating from, parents do have the option to choose to send their kids to a hand-selected private school. Sounds awfully racist to the Democratic Party to say that, but we know that it is absolutely the parents' rights to be involved in the children's school curriculum, what they're learning, and who the parents or who the teachers are. Day number one with Governor Kelly, the pandemic will be over in Michigan. We will cancel all mandates related to the COVID-19 pandemic permanently. We will make sure that our school districts are no longer teaching critical race theory, social emotional learning, DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, because we can see the DEI crowd is not very inclusive, like what us true Americans really are. I want to be very clear as well that for the school districts across our state that are not allowing parents to be involved in the children's education, we will end all of their funding immediately. We will stand up to any overreaching federal government that wants to come in and indoctrinate our kids. We talk about global learning initiative. What do we want to teach them to be like Communist China? The Communist Democratic Party absolutely wants that. Look what's happening with Justin Trudeau right now. We need to be focusing on academics, skilled trades, and American constitutional civics here in the United States of America. My friends, I'm here to encourage you tonight. I'm here to tell you that it is not too late to do the right things for our country, for these students, for our kids, for the parents, and for the future of our great nation. God bless America.
Good evening. My name is Scott Skank. I'm the father of five Forest Hills students or graduates thereof. I am off-topic, and I probably can't follow that last speech very well, but that's probably why I'm not a politician. I'm here for one reason, one reason only, and it happened last night. I had the good fortune to sit next to one of my children's teachers. A teacher who explained to me here told me a story about how his, one of his students fell flat on his butt because the chair broke underneath him. Now, this sounds out of place, but it's only the second time it's happened this calendar year, and since we haven't had a full week of school this entire calendar year, and we're partly through midwinter break and partly through break, that's pretty high incidence. He further related how other teachers have gone out to consignment shops to buy needed desks and chairs for their students. So, I thought about this, and I, only rely on my personal experience, there are probably 100 examples of what I'm going to tell you. The Forest Hills Central Wrestling Room, I doubt if anyone has ever been in it. 300 square feet of inadequately ventilated space that has had roof leaks for 20 years. Somehow, the administration thinks it's better to put solar panels on the school roof rather than fix the leak. Why you can put 35 sweaty teenagers housing two varsity wrestling teams in 320 square feet of space? That's one square yard to wrestle in is beyond me. You can only guess what that probably smells like. Let's talk about a Forest Hills Public School pool. A pool shared by 30, sorry, by three different schools and the community. State-of-the-art, 35 years ago, hasn't had a fresh coat of paint since. Inadequate ventilation, inadequate lighting. There's a period of over 18 months that we know of that it did not have proper filtration. It was even shut down by the Health Department, probably, many of you don't know that. It's an embarrassment in some respects. I feel bad. I feel bad for my kids who have to breathe the fumes. I feel bad when I have to sit in the, in the stands. I was told, I gotta speed up. I was told earlier this year that the science budget was cut. We don't know why. I sent in inquiries because I was interested in helping out, but they never got back to me. My kids tell me there's no, there's no money for paper copies, so the teachers can't make photocopies. Teachers ask for Kleenex and hand sanitizer. Yet, I'm also told that last Wednesday, the administration announced a beautiful new administration building. The superintendent's suite is 900 square feet. That's larger than my first house with my wife and three kids. Yet, our facilities are crumbling, and I really have to ask the Board to justify this. I've been in the administration building, I know it's old, I know I'd like to have another nice new one. But if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. So, I would like to understand where this money's coming from and why it's being prioritized. I'm unfortunately out of time, but these are just a few things to thought, and I really hope they've worked and responded to me about prioritization of, of all these funds. A $114 million budget plus multimillions in grants and other fees, $30,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deanne Fryer. I taught in this district for 27 years, and I still have. My youngest is a junior at Central High School. We were out to dinner tonight, and I quickly ran over here just to listen to the Board meeting, and my son came with me. And as things are being said to the Board, he is sitting next to me saying, "Mom, that's not true. Mom, when things are talked about with, on the left side, our teachers are teaching us to look at the right side as well. We are being taught by our high school teachers to look at both sides of the continuum in social studies. Mom, we are not being taught to be racist." And he is probably one of the strongest kids to believe in equality for all children, no matter what color they are. I also want to thank the Board, having a son with Duchenne muscular dystrophy, for keeping that mask mandate in place so that he could come to school. Because if you had dropped that, someone as susceptible as him would be unable to be a part of the school district that we love dearly. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done for my child that is in school, my other son that passed away before he was able to graduate his senior year in 2018, and my daughter who is 24, who to this day says, "Mom, if I hadn't been exposed to the things that I was in high school, I would have not been prepared for college with all of the things that were out there in the world." So, thank you for exposing my child to things in the real world so they are ready to go beyond Forest Hills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more, okay.
Hi, I'm Laura, Ada, Michigan. Put four kids through Lowell Schools and have grandchildren in parochial now. And if anything, I'm impressed with the outcome here today. And for you people sitting there at the Board, coming from a father that sat on a board at one time, had many death threats, I thank you for coming out tonight, as you do, because that's your oath to show up. But anything we take away tonight, a lot of people spoke, had a lot of good information, but do your homework. Look for the truth. It's good against evil, and connect the dots. And the trucker convoy is ramping up, so you all better stock up. Good night.
Hi, guys. Kristy, and I live on Nap Street. First of all, to the Board and Administration, I want to say I'm sorry for some of the things that you've had to go through the last few months. It's been hard to watch, and I can only imagine what you've all been feeling. Just know there are many of us, if not more, who support you and acknowledge everything that you do for our children, for all children. My heart hurts hearing people talk so negatively about the LGBTQ community. I'm not sure if it's based on fear or lack of knowledge. Whether they like it or not, these kids exist. They are in the school district. They are no different than anybody else's children. They deserve to be seen, they deserve to be heard, they deserve representation, and they deserve a safe learning environment. They do not deserve to be hidden, shunned, or bullied, especially by adults. I've listened to grown adults be bullies in these meetings, and I can only imagine what goes on behind closed doors. I'm still trying to figure out why grown adults are so afraid of these kids. Whether they like it or not, these beautiful kids are not going anywhere. So, I thank you, Board and Administration, for willing to stand up for every child in your district. As a mom to a child in the LGBTQ community, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Oh, okay, there we go.
Board, Superintendent, thank you. During the May 13th, 2021 Michigan House Oversight Committee reviewing House Bill 4667, Dr. Barbara Katerberg, a professor of occupational therapy at Davenport University who specializes in childhood education issues, testified about the horrific physical and psychological effects on children who have been forced to wear masks due to unconstitutional and unscientific mandates. In fact, Dr. Katerberg stated that forcing children to wear masks all day long is tantamount to child abuse. Dr. Katerberg's analysis is bolstered by a study published online on December 18th, 2020, using data from Germany's First Registry, recording the experience of 25,930 school-aged children had wearing masks daily in school, and they reported the following adverse effects. 60% of them reported irritability, 53% reported headaches, 49% reported unhappiness, 44% reported reluctance to attend school, 42% reported malaise, 38% reported impaired learning, and 37% reported drowsiness or fatigue. Adding to these concerning symptoms, they also found 29.7% reported feeling short of breath, 26.4% being dizzy, and 17.9% were unwilling to move or play. Hundreds more experienced accelerated respiration, tightness in chest, weakness, and short-term impairment of consciousness. In his August 202021 article entitled "The Science of Masking Kids at School Remains Uncertain" in New York Magazine, no right-wing publication, David Zweig provides details of largely ignored, large-scale study conducted by the CDC, which analyzed some 90,000 elementary students in 169 Georgia schools from November 16th to December 11th, 2020. These findings cast doubt on the impact of many of the most common mitigation measures in American schools. Distancing, hybrid models, classroom barriers, HEPA filters, and most notably requiring student masking were each found to not have a statistically significant benefit. This is the CDC's own data. In other words, these measures could not be said to be effective. In the realm of science and public health policy outside the US, the implications of these particular findings are not exactly controversial. Many of America's peer nations around the world, including the UK, Ireland, all of Scandinavia, France, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, have exempted kids with varying age cutoffs from wearing masks in classrooms. Conspicuously, there's no evidence of more outbreaks in schools in those countries relative to the schools in the US, where the solid majority of kids wore masks for an entire academic year and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. These countries, along with the World Health Organization, whose child masking guidance differs substantially from the CDC's recommendations, have explicitly recognized that the decision to mask students carries with it potential academic and social harms for children and may lack a clear benefit.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Morse. I know we have spoken sometimes on the phone or via email, and I just want to hopefully end this evening on a positive note. I want to thank you, the School Board, Superintendent Beam, for conversation, for phone calls. I would like to thank our administrators in our schools and our teachers for everything they've done for our children throughout the last couple of years. I can say that my children have learned to care about their community by realizing what wearing a mask does for their neighbor, you know, at the desk next to them. I can say that my son entered middle school at Forest Hills Eastern, he's in eighth grade now, but his seventh grade year, and me leaving him outside to walk in for orientation, not being able to go, but watching him excel at school, watching him hit the honor roll for three semesters in a row, something that I know was made possible because of the dedication of the teachers at Forest Hills Public Schools. We chose Forest Hills over, you know, East Grand Rapids when we were looking to move. We had heard so many wonderful things about this district, and I am so proud to be part of Forest Hills Public Schools. I am so embarrassed at seeing so many people here tonight that want to push a political agenda. This is not about our children. They're here to run for the commission seat, they're here to run for governor, they're not even part of this community. But please listen to those of us in this community that truly care about you, those of us that are not up here threatening you with lawsuits and pointless letters. Listen to our stories of how our teachers have impacted our children in such positive ways, the ones that have said, "No, he needs a little extra help with math, you know, he, he might be ahead of the, ahead of the curve, let's give him some extra opportunity to work," you know? The dialogue between the administrators at the school. I just have so many good things to say, and I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I just want to let you know you guys are cared for. I love Forest Hills Public Schools, and I look forward to us continuing to be a top district in the state of Michigan. a top district in the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Hi, Mandy White. Just have a couple of questions. I know that we are filming the, or videoing the meetings tonight, but can we also have the videos of all the other meetings that you have so that we can look and understand what exactly is being discussed about our district and what will impact the kids? I see the meeting minutes that are available for us, but there's so many questions I have when I see these topics of what we're going to discuss. And that just doesn't seem to be being presented to the public for us to understand. And it would be really nice to understand, what exactly are you saying? What are the options? Pros, cons, anything that, to give us a little bit more information about what you guys are making the decision on that will impact our kids. It would be helpful, is all I'm asking. And to have those videos, to ask those questions. And, you know, do we send an email to all of you or anyone specific about questions about topics or discussions or criteria that's being coming up, and we need an answer or would like an answer? It's just to understand more of what you guys are deciding and how you're making those decisions. I just ask that you be a little bit more detailed and a little bit more transparent on those discussions. And have those recordings available for us to go back and look at, because some of those meetings are during a business day, and we're not able to attend. So, I just ask that you please make that available to all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy.
Hello, my name is Jo. I'm from Ada. I have a question. But you've made it abundantly clear that you don't answer any questions at all without consulting with your attorneys. So, my question to you is, after you speak to your attorney, to ask him if you feel you should give an apology to the lady who came up here and quoted a page or two from one of the books in your library, even giving a page number, I'd like to see you apologize to that woman. Because you brought her to tears right in front of all of us. And yet, excuse me.
Jo, Jo, why don't you direct to us? We're listening to every word you say. We've got you.
You want to talk to them? What I'm saying is, we all watched a woman be brought to tears because she was, she took a clip from one of the books that is in your library that you continue to deny exists. So, I feel, and I know I don't speak for myself, you owe everybody here an explanation on that. You owe them that. Because you keep denying this. But she came here and she read a couple of pages, even giving the page numbers. And you sit there, and last meeting, at the end of the meeting, I talked to you and I talked to Ms. Atwater over there, and I told you, I've gone through your curriculum with a fine-tooth comb. And I expressed some of the specific things that I found in there, and I asked you questions about, oh, yeah, 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 we'll get back to you. And you, Ms. Atwater, you said, oh, no, no, can't be. Well, it is. And you had an example of that tonight. And to the group behind me that is extremely rude, that none of you seem to call them out for, I have a suggestion for you all. You want a dose of reality? You want to know what diversity, equity, and inclusion is? Come and take a trip with me to the South Side of Chicago, where I come from. You guys won't last five minutes.
Thank you, Jo. All right. If there are no other public comments, we will move on to the next portion of our agenda, which would be the consent grouping. I need a motion to approve our consent grouping.
I move. I've never done this before. We approve Consent Grouping Items Six, Items A through C.
And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Superintendent Beam, are there any items you'd like to bring out?
Just a couple of items tonight. First, to point out, this is the time of the year where we bring forth the resolution to opt out of the statewide Schools of Choice program and to enter into the Kent ISD Schools of Choice Plan. So, that's for consideration tonight, consistent with previous years. And then also, we have an agreement for a contract addendum for our contract to add on a signing bonus for our food service staff and our cleaners as well. So, that's coming tonight for your approval. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Beam? I guess we'll roll into committee reports. Mrs. Gregory, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. We have, the first action item would be the approval for payment of bills. The second is the approval for the delinquent payment of property taxes. This is personal property taxes that are uncollected after five years and requests received annually by our taxing authorities. And so, basically, they're uncollected, so we need to strike them from the record, and we're asking for approval. The third is property tax reimbursement, the authority authorizing reimbursement of $15,000 to Ada Township and $10,700 to Kent County for refund of property taxes. There is obviously some updates for ESSAR. I'm sure Superintendent Beam will go into. But we are focused in multiple areas with the ESSAR dollars, and it's exciting to hear the conversations we've had around that. The construction updates, everyone can go to the homepage of the Forest Hills Public School website, and there is a link directly to some of the live action of updates we've had. Currently, we have seen an update of the administration building that is in progress right now. It is going to, hopefully, be located at the FAC campus. It will also house our Transition Center, which is currently located on the northern campus. So, that's still in plans to see what that will look like. This will, with the Transition Center included, it will allow for a central location for transition students for busing to multiple career locations. It's a very modern design, and possibly breaking ground in fall of 2022, which is 18 months to complete, and spring of 2024 completion. So, we'll see how that comes along with the final designs, and we'll bring it to the board, obviously, for approval coming up soon. On deck is the redesign for Ada Vista. As everyone knows, that needs a little redesign. There is another project update, which is a project that was inspired by students, which is a solar panel project. It's a zero-cost initiation to us as a district. Basically, the way this works is we have peak performance times that we get charged extra for. So, solar panels allows for us to do some cost savings in those areas. This project was initially brought to us by students who brought up the idea of how can we save some money? So, as we're going through this process, we are looking at opportunities with it, only with companies that bring an educational component to it. So, there's a handful of companies that we're looking at and looking at the opportunity for those solar panels, but with the educational component of, you know, continuing on that line of solar in multiple classrooms. So, if we are able to do this, it all balances out, looks good, we'll start in later of 2022, hopefully. And that is, I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Nicole? All right. Mrs. Atwater.
Thank you. We also had our regular monthly meeting last week, and started with an update from Julie with everything that you just heard from Nicole. Our instruction update started off on a great note with a really fabulous view of how Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation partners with the district to help fund excellence. I recently heard a parent ask why we have fundraising for anything. And the answer in part is because the state controls our purse strings. And as we have said before, it only funds for mediocrity. That's kind of a tagline with the foundation, and we want to fund for excellence. We have excellent teachers. We have excellent administrators. Sometimes we just don't have enough money to do what we would like to do in the classroom. Many people don't realize, and I'll just repeat it here because education is always good, many people don't realize that we are a donor district. What that means is that we have to collect more taxes than we get back from the state. We send everything in. If it's, you know, whatever it is, 20 million that we collect, we only get back 13. There's a $7 million excess that goes to the state that does not come back to Forest Hills. Yeah, 7 million is more than I thought. I actually thought the number's more like 5, but it's higher, it's 7. The vast majority of dollars that we do get goes to personnel, teacher salaries, benefit costs, employment taxes and the like. That leaves, whatever it is, 12% to 15%, Julie can correct me, Finance can correct me because I don't know the exact number, but 12% to 15% or so of our budget. That's, I'm not saying that's not a lot of money. It is a lot of money. But it isn't enough to do every single thing that we would like to do. It can't, it's not enough to cover all of the wants, such as, say, I don't know, banned uniforms or sending kids to events, things like that. So, updating playground equipment, the myriad other things that I think that parent might have had in mind when asking about fundraising. So, yeah, sometimes, you know, our PTOs, our foundation fundraises, and then we can help put toward excellence. And thanks to the foundation, that is an entity which responds directly to teacher wants, what helps get to excellence. So, that background being in mind, last week, we welcomed our own Michelle Becker and Clark Udell and Michelle Galery from the ISD. And they gave us a little glimpse of the impact that just one teacher grant through the foundation is already having on a huge number of our K-8 students. It also is a great example of why equity in the classroom is so important. At the risk of making them all grown, we really had a ball learning about this particular issue, which was a grant for adaptive physical education equipment. So, adaptive PE equipment is helping all students achieve their individual potential. Our goal of removing barriers to learning applies to all classrooms, including those that take place on recess grounds or a soccer field or the gymnasium in PE class. Our special needs students, unfortunately, often are left out, left behind, left merely as observers instead of participants. That has been a problem, and it's been improved thanks to this grant written by the two Michelles. It's easier to put it that way. They first polled teachers to find out what was needed to support some of differentiation in physical education. And they're finding that all students are now benefiting from this new equipment because it's something new, it's fun, it's colorful, and it's exciting. It's stuff, it includes things like an accessible basketball hoop for students who use a wheelchair or a walker, a beeper ball for students who are blind. We have a student who was born without eyes playing soccer or being in a PE section that's teaching soccer. Not very effective, not a participant. With this beeper ball, the ball moves, and the student can find the ball based on sound instead of sight. Visually impaired students can, all of them will benefit from that. And Michelle brought two of these new balls. One is weighted for kids who have mobility issues. When they kick it, it doesn't go flying across the gym because it's weighted, it slows down, and they can keep with it. And they brought the beeper ball. And it was really fun to see those things. The grant also included teacher training so that these new resources aren't just going to go in a closet and not get used. The teachers are excited about it. They are bouncing ideas off of one another and collaborating to, yeah, they're collaborating to get the most use out of this equipment. And their kids are really coming up with some creative ways of, as a class, using this equipment, including all of their special ed students, classmates, who prior weren't always included. So, it's breaking down barriers, and it was really exciting to see. As I said, the equipment is fun, it's colorful, it's inviting. And I am sure you all would feel the same that we got to appreciate when we saw some photographs and video at the end of their presentation. It was, it was heartwarming, and it was exciting to see that kind of learning suddenly going on for kids who hadn't had that experience before. I'm sure Elizabeth, wherever she is, would love for me to say at this point, she didn't ask me to do this, but for those interested in learning more about the foundation, you can find it at FHPSF.org. We're doing really good work with that, and this was a nice example of it. Tamasha was also on our agenda, and she helped flesh out the equity part of this adaptive physical education equipment grant and reminded us that, you know, our work is about equity in approach, in opportunity, as well as outcomes. We want all of our kids to exceed, to, I'm sorry, to succeed. And to exceed, there are limitations. We all have limitations. Some were visible than others, but we all do, and we want that for all of our kids to succeed. We want that outcome. So, equity is important to outcomes as well. I would disagree with thoughts that that isn't the case. We don't want to be able to predict outcome based on any categorization other than FHPS student. That's the only category that we want to be able to say, yep, if they're an FHPS student, we will help them succeed. So, Tamasha helped remind us of all of that, that this is just about being responsive to every student's needs and equipping our teachers to help be responsive to every student's needs. We'll continue to do this work because all means all, and every student at Forest Hills is worth it. Next, we had a presentation on the, from our GMB folks that Nicole already summarized. The only thing I want to say is that the drawings are exciting. I look forward to seeing ground break. Remind the community that there was a community study of our administration building. We had been putting this off for years and years, and the community study said, we evaluated everything, and we recommend a new building. So, finally, we are going to replace a couple of dinosaurs, the one at the corner of Burton and Cascade, as well as the one where our Transition Center has been housed. It is not as conducive to education of our students who are there until '26. And this new combination building will be really good to centralize those transition students as well and get them in a really good building for education. And finally, the money for that, I would just remind the board that that was approved by the voters in our 2018 bond election. Scott then provided some background for us on legislative requirements that came with the pandemic. These are called 98B data requirements. As part of last year's School Aid Act, school districts across Michigan must now present pandemic data and establish goals in light of the pandemic for our students. The goals are not defined for districts. We had to come up with, you know, pick what we wanted to get students back to pre-pandemic form. So, we chose to use NWA MAP standards, the 2020 benchmarks, which surprisingly aren't really from 2020, they are pre-pandemic. So, they're titled 2020, but these are benchmarks that are pre-pandemic. And that's how students nationwide performed before March of 2020. We then used a linking study to MSTEP, which is the Michigan Measurement Assessment. And in other words, our district tool of MAP, the MAP test, helps predict proficiency on MSTEP. Looking at those numbers, we looked at the question of whether our kids are in fact growing academically, rather than losing 20 to 30 IQ points every month. In fact, the answer is yes. Our students are responding to learning. We are gathering data showing the pattern of our students scoring above pre-pandemic norms. And at this point, overall, FHPS students met academic performance goals established under Section 98B of the law that I mentioned. Trends differ, obviously, among subgroups, but more than 73% of all K-8 grade students achieved MAP scale scores above the national average in both the fall and winter testing windows. That's exciting news. Obviously, we always have room for improvement. We always want to grow. We always look for ways to improve. But it's rewarding to know that our students are learning and moving forward. Finally, we reviewed a request for approval of supplemental instructional resources. This comes to us from the Central Woodlands sixth-grade teachers. They would like to use the book, The Deadliest Diseases Then and Now They would like to use the book, The Deadliest Diseases Then and Now by Deborah Hopkins as part of the units of study called Tapping the Power of Nonfiction. This is an excellent example, by the way, of the fact that when teachers don't see what they want that they think is best for our students in the units of studies recommended resources, they find one that does fit. So this is one where they don't want to use what was recommended by the Teachers College of Study Programming. That was called Fast Food Nation, they don't want to use that. The Central Woodlands teams asked for the text in place of that and we are recommending a 30-day review of that book. So our action items were to approve the minutes of our January 12, 2022 meeting and to begin, to recommend a 30-day review of The Deadliest Diseases Then and Now. That concludes my report.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Atwater? That was a lot. That was an exciting meeting. Yeah, it just sounds, I missed going to that one, for sure. All right, I think with that, we need to have a roll call vote and then we'll move on to some informational items. Okay?
Right, Mrs. Atwater?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Fossum?
Yes.
Mrs. Vonck? Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Ms. Cavell, yes? And Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's move on to informational items. What would you like to share tonight?
I have nothing new tonight on that, I know, yes. Nothing under this.
Okay, all right, well then let's roll into your superintendent's report.
All right, wonderful. Well, thank you to Northern Trails for hosting us tonight. Thank you to Sue Gutierrez, our principal here, and our staff, our students and music performers and our teachers who spoke tonight. Appreciate everyone celebrating that great program with us here tonight. Thanks to all the community members who are here tonight. As an educator for 30 years, it's all about kids, that's what this is all about. And it's, as I look at our district, we're about two things. That's providing each and every child with the building blocks, knowledge and skills to learn anything. That's the first thing that we do, so we're teaching kids how to read, we're teaching kids the universal language of music, we're teaching kids math and how to compute. We're teaching kids how to think, and I emphasize the word how and not what, on issues that are unsettled, in things that are not fact-based. We want students to be good, strong thinkers and to be able to think for themselves. And that's what we're committed to. We also want to provide students into a window of the world where adults are working. What are all the things that are happening that adults do out in the world? So the things that we heard tonight, I loved our academic boosters talking about what's happening in the skilled trades. That's a wonderful thing and we need to talk more about that and share, share more about that with our students. And we need to make sure that what we're doing in our schools, especially as students get older in our secondary schools, that they're able to begin applying and practicing these skills. Kids soon find out as we grow up that we don't encounter a math problem just by itself. It's embedded with a context, within a context that's greater in terms of whether it's an issue in business, whether it's an issue in science or medicine or whatever else it may be. So what we're looking to do is to bring those disciplines together more and more and more, to have that interdisciplinary learning. What I would just say to anyone is if your child is having a classroom experience of some of the things that we heard tonight, please speak up if the classroom experience is, is not what you expect, not what you want. Yes, we're in a partnership in this learning for our students with our parents and with our community. Many people spoke of some sort of heavy hand of government. Government are the parents sitting around the table who were elected by the people sitting in the audience. This is my report right now, sir. I do teach in the classroom. Yeah, parents can come into classrooms, we have parents in our classrooms and certainly welcome to, for parents to come into our, into our schools. This is not a dialogue right now, this is a report. And so we continue on with our mission in partnership with our community and that's our entire community, all the way through. So again, I welcome the participation and I welcome all of the focus on the wellbeing of our kids. I think when we can come together on that, great things will happen for our kids, absolutely. A little bit of a COVID update in response to what I said in late December. When we saw the Omicron variant coming through, we knew that we were going to see a very high increase. That was a prediction from many public health and medical folks that we'll see a very high increase in cases. And indeed, in just a two-week period in January, we had more cases in our schools of students and staff members than all of last school year combined. And by being able to take some time to look at that science, we were also able to leverage the five-day period of isolation that the Health Department was providing for schools that still had a mask policy in place. So we kept that in place at our elementary schools, we did not have that at our secondary schools because we began the year without that, given the availability of vaccines for our secondary students and the time, place on that. As the numbers came down, and they have fallen quite dramatically, we were happy to be able to remove that masking policy. So we feel good about that. Also, the Health Department responded last week by eliminating the final public health order in Kent County pertaining to COVID-19. So that's a great thing to celebrate as well and recognizes the spot that we're in now, which is a much, much reduced risk level that we're seeing. I think it's still important to remember, and our students have been doing a great job with this, is there are many reasons why people will continue to wear masks. Some people are recovering from COVID and they don't want to place others at risk and that's fine for that choice. Some people have folks in their own household who are immunocompromised and they want to make sure they're protecting people along those ways. And our students understand that, our students get that and understand that all the way through. So students have been great on all that going forward. In terms of the ESER relief funds, we know that currently under the Federal Budgeting Act that provided relief effort to a variety of states as well as local units of government and in this case, schools, that we have until September 30th of 2024 to spend those funds. And we have been working with our parent advisory council, our student advisory council, our teachers, our support staff members, our Board of Education and our principals as well to look at all the needs that we have out there and how they might fit in with the allowable uses of those funds. We have a $2 million allocation under the ESER formula funding and we have an eight and a half million dollar allocation under the ESER equalization funding. And so we are continuing to pull information together on that, on where we intend to use those funds. I can tell you that we will be spending dollars for expanding after-school programming for students that need more time in any of the academic areas for additional help and assistance, we will do that. And also looking to spend those dollars for an expanded summer learning program for students and families that want to take advantage of that additional time in the summer. And then also to address any learning loss that may take place. So if there's students who are behind in reading or math or we need more time to understand any concepts, we're looking for ways to address that learning loss. And again, that typically requires additional time, but it also may help with additional people. So that's where we're looking to bring additional paraprofessionals and educators into our schools to help students with that learning loss. One of the things that we heard from parents and students and teachers over and over was a need for additional counselors. We are blessed in Forest Hills to have a student to counselor ratio that's the envy of many other districts around our area and throughout the state. But that doesn't mean where we're addressing all those needs. And so that's an area that we've been continuing to look closely at to see how we can address a diverse set of needs as we think of the work of our guidance counselors, which is really counseling students for learning beyond high school in all of its forms, as well as counseling students for any personal counseling needs they may have or also helping with mental health services and referral on that. So that's where our ESER dollars are consolidating around. We really are not looking at a whole lot of things related to equipment. Again, these funds, there are restrictions on how we would spend those. And when I'm speaking of equipment, I'm speaking of things like air handling equipment, HVAC, things like that. We hear of many districts looking at that. Again, thankfully for, because of the support of our community over the years, we're pretty well up to snuff in that area. So that feels pretty good going forward. So again, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all of the expressions that were here. Took notes on all of these pieces and I'll certainly be following up with people as well. That's my report tonight.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, at this point, we'll move on to board communications. Are there any, I know a couple of you went to the Student Advisory Council and Dan just mentioned that. So Maggie maybe, do you want to share a little bit about your experience?
I can share, I can share the Student Advisory Council and also the foundation, yeah. So I don't even, I don't remember how many students were probably at that meeting, do you, I mean, maybe 25-ish, yeah? Okay, yeah. And so I lov, I loved being there. I think it's so amazing to talk to the students. I miss being with students every day, all day. So that one hour was good for me. I'm in lots of schools, but I don't get to talk to the students like I did at that meeting and they had some really fantastic ideas about how to spend some of the ESER money. A lot of them did echo what Dan just mentioned about additional after-school time, additional resources if they are feeling behind in something. So that was a really practical use that they had come up with. They had some really creative ideas too for the money that were really fun to hear. But we just kind of had them post all of their ideas up on a whiteboard and talk about those and brainstorm those ideas. And then those are all collected and brought back to administration for future review. So it was, it was fantastic.
Yeah, and then how often does the Student Advisory Council meet? I know, have you gone to one before?
I just, it was great, super high-level thinkers, diverse group. They were engaged, I think they were a little tired, they started falling asleep at the end. They were really engaged, but no, it was great. I think they were every other month, now they're going to go to every month.
Well, we're going to talk about every month, they meet four times a year, just for now, because it just started last year and they are anxious to connect with administrators and superintendent be more often and they have some great topics to bring to the table, so.
Outstanding.
They're, they want to make the schools better, I mean, that student voice, you can hear it from that group. So Mary started that, thank you, Mary.
Yeah, well, and then you've got the Judy Waltons of the world and all those other student voice people there, so that's a good thing. All right, and then how about foundation updates?
Yeah, so foundation updates, there were 44 staff members that submitted grant requests or grant applications to the foundation. And so those are going to be reviewed on Friday to see which teachers are going to be granted those, those grants. Those checks, yeah. And just to kind of remind you, so Marty, you talked a little bit about the adaptive PE equipment at the beginning that we heard about in the curriculum meeting. So that's something that the foundation helped to provide with those grants. But also, they have provided things like updated books on all 50 states. And I saw today on the Facebook page for Forest Hills that those 50-state books had not been updated since 1992. So they were due for an update and so that was a request that was given out via the foundation. An exercise station for an ASD classroom, 3D models of molecules for biology and chemistry courses, a wide-belt sanding machine for industrial arts, just to name a few of the things that the foundation has granted to teachers. So 44 teachers put in an application and they will be hearing about if they got that in the next few weeks. And then they also launched their first annual K-6 art contest and then an essay contest for the 7th through 12th graders. And they are, the prompt for that contest is what does community mean to you? And they're going to award three winners at the K-6 level for the art contest of $100. And at the middle school level for the essay contest, they will receive a $250 scholarship at the middle school level if they are chosen as a winner. And the high school level, they will receive a $1,000 scholarship if they are chosen as a winner for that contest. You can find more information about that contest at fhp sf.org and that contest ends March 28. And then in May, May 5th, when they do the State of the District Luncheon, they're going to highlight those winners. Yeah, and so then segue into State of the District Luncheon, that is May 5th. And that is from 11:45 to 1:00 at Watermark Country Club. And again, you can go to fhp sf.org if you are interested in hosting a table for that event.
Excellent. Any questions about the foundation updates? Fantastic. Any other board communications to share this evening?
I have a small one. This, last week, I was able to do cultural intelligence training with Dr. Fossum and it was taught by Tamasha and team. And, you know, when you think of cultural intelligence, it seems really big, but it's actually quite simple. It's the, you know, the way I step into maybe Mary's house and the rules and things that are just different than my house or the way I step into your work Suzanne is different than the way my work is. So you have to kind of adapt yourself and learn some of the, just the ways, right? So that's just culture, just taking time and sitting and listening and observing and then learning, moving into it. So that was my biggest takeaway, I'm not sure if you had a.
Yeah, I thought it was really interesting, because typically when you think of culture, you're thinking sort of my culture versus that country's culture and thinking of it on such a large level. But she did really bring it down to a much more local scale and as much as, you know, my house to your house and to my grandmother's house and what goes here might not fly over there and that you just have to constantly adjust your thinking and, you know, your way isn't always right or wrong, just as somebody else's isn't right or wrong, it might just be different. And one of the things that she put up that stuck with me, because I saw it again yesterday, was like a car parked across the lines in a parking lot. And she was like, you know, what's the first thing that you think of when you think that? And everybody's like, oh, you know, just all these negative things.
It's like a Lamborghini, first of all, like parked in between the parking lot. Okay, I thought, it's a nice car.
It was a nicer car, but yeah, parked right in the middle and everybody's initial thought was, oh, this jerk, you know, me first kind of attitude of what they might have been doing. And then you take a step back and go, all right, what other situation might have been going on here? Like, okay, you know, maybe they were rushing to the hospital and this was the, you know, what they ran in. Or maybe the lot was covered in with snow when they first got there and you couldn't see the lines. So just kind of, I try to remember this to take a step back and be more aware of like, what other things might be going on? It might not be that grandma's rules are wrong, they're just different and you need to remember that. I thought it was really applicable for, for school, I mean, even kids. This teacher might have completely different rules than that teacher does. Just the awareness that you had to bring to it, it was real, it was really interesting training.
Wonderful, yes, well, I don't, we've talked about that outside of this. It's a big topic in the workplace now and for our students and staff and for all of us, it's helpful for us to work with each other and with our community for sure. And as I mentioned, some of you know, my son did get engaged. So it always is good to know how one family does things versus another, that's what I'll have to look forward to. Excellent. All right, I guess the only other thing I will mention is several of us are going to attend some virtual, it won't be as much fun as in person, but there are some virtual trainings through MASB that a few of us are taking part in over the weekend. So we'll be sure to share back with you, Dan, our learnings when we meet in committee meetings coming up. So I don't think there's anything else, I have, anyone else? All right, I need a motion to adjourn and we will call this a day.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Support.
All right, we are adjourned.